Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Chevy Chase Town Council Meeting. Will all who care to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okidokie. We're going to start with the Treasurer's Report. Rich, whenever you're ready.
The, we're sixty-seven percent through the fiscal year. We've received about sixty-seven percent of our budgeted operating revenue and spent about sixty-two percent of our budgeted operating expenditures. One thing that that we always deal with is our income spread out over the year. And we originally budgeted three point six five million for revenue. And it looks like we're actually going to receive about three point four three million instead of that number. So we're going to be about two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars lower than what we had budgeted for. But we'll talk more about that in our budget review stuff. The other thing, there's a, I mentioned this at the last meeting, that we have a negative balance in the capital expenses in the park. But that's because we haven't, we got a grant from the state that paid for a lot of it, but we haven't got all the Zimmerman expenses in yet. So we had, we had originally budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the renovation. All of that except about a hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred is going to be paid through that grant. So that's why you still see a negative balance. We just haven't gotten all the Zimmerman expenses in yet, as you know. Other than that, everything looks pretty normal. We did have a significant overage in our snow removal. But we expected that. And so that's, that shows up as well, but it's for the total, total line item, we're still doing real well. The only other thing you may have noticed is in our general government expenses, we had a significant, fairly significant amount of overtime, not a lot. But again, that's because Miguel does the, operates the truck and spreads the preconditioning for the, for the snow. So we have some overtime expenses there that we usually don't have. And that's about it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I just want to acknowledge, we had a council meeting on Sunday where we walked through Zimmerman Park and it was really terrific to see the finished product after four years. Well, as far as I'm concerned, it's finished. Working on this for the last four years myself, I know you all have worked on it for much longer and it is a lovely, lovely amenity for the town. Can I ask you, Rich, what was our total budgeted cost for that? And do you know where we're going to come out once everything comes?
We budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand. And all that except for a hundred and twelve, I say a hundred and twelve? Yeah, a hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred is paid for by the grant that we got from the state. So our expenditures, our costs are a hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred.
Well, that's good. That's very good. So that, but that doesn't include the fence if we end, or does it include the fence? Includes the fence? Okay, but does it include then the, the remove or the removable fence or with the temporary fence that we might buy?
Everything that was in the original scope, which was the fence.
Okay.
And all those plantings and everything else. So it looks like we're going to be under, if it comes in, as David thinks it's going to come in under, under that amount. We won't have spent the full hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred.
Excellent. Okay. Well, that's great management by the town staff. Thank you.
Any questions for Rich? Okay, great. Todd, I just want to make sure that that you're aware that Stephanie's having a little bit of an issue getting into the meeting. Okay, thank you. Let's go over to Todd's Town Manager's Report.
Sorry, I'm just troubleshooting here a second. Could I have just one second?
Of course.
Trying to get pass codes out. I don't know what's going on. The link, it works for me fine, but Steph.
Yeah, and oh, there we go. There's Stephanie.
She looks like she's on now.
Yeah.
On the website and embedded in the hyperlink. So I don't know what the problem is.
Yeah, everyone else could get in. So Stephanie, you're all set? Can you hear us?
I am, I am. I mean, I was, I used the hyperlink that was in the town invite.
Yeah.
Did not work.
So strange.
Yeah. Okay. We're just at the Town Manager's Report.
Sorry.
Todd, when you get the chance.
Sure. Over the past month, staff has been involved in several major projects, including the Bethesda Market Parker Development Project. Although nothing significant is developed on that front, which we will discuss later this evening. We've also analyzed and responded to the county's proposed workforce housing legislation and assisted with and tracked, excuse me, proposed state law amendments related to municipal regulatory authority. All of those matters will be discussed later this evening. In addition to those special projects, staff met with Corso to discuss matters related to the redevelopment of seventy-one hundred Connecticut Avenue for the senior living facility. And tonight, the council will discuss a draft construction management agreement that we intend to send to Corso for review after receiving the council's blessing. Further on Corso, I expect the April sixteenth meeting to be Corso-centric. Corso representatives will be at a work session prior to that meeting, immediately prior to that meeting at six PM that evening to discuss the status of redeveloping the project. Corso will send their VP of Construction, Kelly Panther, as well as the firm that they've hired to do construction management for them for this project. During that regular meeting on April sixteenth, I expected to ask the council several things to agree to the ratification of the Declaration of Covenants, since Corso now has certified site plan. Unless, of course, the council wishes to negotiate any additional binding elements with Corso before execution of the DOC. I also expect to ask the council at that meeting to review and approve the garage lease agreement, which is actually pretty straightforward and in good shape. And finally, I expect to ask the council to approve the, the final construction management agreement, assuming after Corso's review, there are no major issues and need to be resolved. And I can bring it to you for approval to be executed or ratified at the April sixteenth meeting. On other fronts, staff continues Zimmerman Park renovations, as was just noted by Joy. And, and staff met with the council this past Sunday to discuss additional amenities to actually complete these improvements and get the project done finally. We continue coordination with MCDT, Montgomery County Department of Transportation and WSSC on proposed Leland Street drainage improvements. Staff undertook a parking analysis on streets in the northwest quadrant of town at the request of the PSC to determine the number of parking spaces occupied on different days and times by legal, illegal and crosstown cars. We should have the results to the PSC and we'll share them with the council as well early next week. Staff met with Pepco to discuss streetlight conversion and ownership issues. We are now trying to schedule a meeting among John from the town staff and both Barney and Rich to further discuss those ownership options and issues with Pepco. We developed the proposed FY twenty-six budget and scheduled the budget work session for March twenty-seventh. On that note, I'm going to have to ask the council for an expedited preapproval, if you hold the budget, a preapproval of the proposed budget. Since the April meeting was moved from April ninth to April sixteenth, and we had to get the election issue of the forecast out expeditiously on the morning of the sixteenth in order for it to arrive in folks' homes by the twenty-second. So, and in that election issue is the proposed budget. So at the March twenty-seventh work session, I intend to ask the council to approve the proposed budget with any amendments that are agreed to that evening. I'll then finalize the budget, the proposed budget, send it to the council for review and then prepare the insert for the election issue of the forecast. Staff also planned for spring trash and treasures and we provided project support to town committees. And that concludes the staff report.
Thanks, Todd. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just, I, Todd and I will be working on a proposed budget. So what you're going to get at that budget review will be something that we've looked at in terms of both the residents' request and our own analysis of the budget. So you'll be getting something that's been looked at before. So it's not going to be Todd just sending us something and it hasn't been reviewed.
Yeah, thanks, Rich. Rich and I are meeting early next week to discuss.
It'll reflect your good thinking.
There you go. Quick, thank you very much, Todd, and I concur with Joy's statements as well. I think Zimmerman Park looks beautiful. I'm really excited to get that a hundred percent complete as soon as possible. So thanks to those. I actually got a text, a couple of text messages today from a nearby resident who saw kids using the picnic table and playing. So already it's, it's a magnet for what we intended it to be. So very much appreciated and good works to all of you all. I did want to say as well that for the April meeting with Corso, I've asked that the town staff not only provide town-wide communication about the meeting, but also a special invitation to the residents of Thorn Apple Meadow and Woodside Place, along with whatever we decide today will be the draft construction management agreement or its contents. Knowing that, you know, the idea here is that everyone's collectively looking at this so that as they will be the most impacted by this construction, that they're well aware of what it is we'll be asking for. So that, that will be followed up on there. So any questions? Okay, thank you, Todd. The next part of our so public comments. So the, we open this up to anyone that would like to provide any public comment to the town council excluding anything about next year's budget or the variance or the ordinance to regulate EV charging stations, because they'll have their appropriate time. So if anyone would like to make a comment on any other than those, those three items that I just mentioned, please, the floor is yours. Hearing nothing? Okay, public comments are closed. We're now opening up a special public comment period on fiscal year twenty-six budget priorities. Happy to hear what comments there are on that. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Okay, we have received some comments on specific ideas for, for budgets. So those are being incorporated accordingly. We'll be discussing those during our work session later this month. But I will go ahead and close the special public comment period. So we will open up our first public hearing, which is a variance for, if you will, reconfiguration of a driveway and then an expanded driveway width going on at forty-one eighteen Aspen Street. We are represented by the residents here. I, Ron, I can do the introduction, or if you'd like to, it's up to you, whatever works.
Yeah, whatever works, I can, I can do it.
Hi, Ron. Excuse me a second. Is it?
Yeah.
What time do we schedule the hearing for?
Seven fifteen.
It's now seven fourteen.
Great, thanks. Wanted to make sure, I was hoping I didn't put seven thirty on there. So great, I'm glad.
Thanks for that.
Sure.
So the hearing will begin with a presentation by the applicant. And the applicant can please note that the council has had the opportunity to review the application in advance. So please don't feel like you have to restate everything in the application, but you may certainly address what you'd like to address. After that, we'll have an opportunity for the council to ask questions. Then anyone else in attendance who would like to ask questions of the applicant or staff might have the opportunity to do so. The applicant will then be given a brief rebuttal. Then the record will close. The council will deliberate and entertain a motion to either approve or deny the request. Please note that if the request is approved, it's not final until it's been written up and signed. And that's a process that takes usually about a week, week and a half. And we have received one email in support from Barbara Bernarski, who I see is also online. And with that, I'll turn over to the applicant. Do we have the applicant with us?
Yes, they're in the room, actually.
Gotcha. Okay, super. All right, if you please step to the podium and, and identify yourself by name and address before you speak and use the microphone. Anyone else who wishes to speak, please also come forward and use the microphone once you are identified by the mayor. Thank you.
Just introduce yourself. Okay, great. Hi, I'm Rachel Orgel. This is Bentley. I'm here with my husband, Adam. We live at four one one eight Aspen Street. And we are looking to extend our driveway to essentially create a parking pad. We have been in communication a lot with Dave, who's been very helpful noting what the town regulations are, which you see in our application. We have not exceeded the, the mouth of the driveway going to, going into the street. Any retaining walls are below those thirty inches. Our contractor is very aware also of the regulations. So everything should meet the code. The main reason that we want it is Aspen Street has a lot of cars on it. It's a pretty narrow street. We are very frequently asked to come move our cars so trucks and emergency vehicles can, can get through, which is fine when we're home, but it also slows them down. You don't ever want to slow down an emergency vehicle. But, you know, sometimes we may not, we may not be, we may not be home because one of us, we, we might be in one shared car as we're out. And so we're hoping that this will help traffic patterns and ease the flow is, is the main reason for this and just for, for better safety.
Thank you. Do, does anyone have any questions?
The I went over and looked at the properties. We're allowed to do that on your property.
Come over whenever you like.
I did notice that the, I think that the existing garage, small but also packed up against a very high wall. Is that right?
That is correct, yeah. Do you, you want me to tell you about that or did you have a question?
No, not really a question. I was trying to want confirmation. That's all I'm really looking for.
Yeah. So that's not a usable structure. When we bought the house, we were told it wasn't stable, let alone it was built in nineteen thirty-four. So a car wouldn't even fit in it anyway. But the, we did initially look at getting that part redone. And it was a lot more complicated because the retaining wall behind it is so high. There's also a bunch of trees in our backyard. And so we were afraid that it would go into the root system. So without, this seemed like a much easier path to get some cars off of the street.
Okay. And the other question I had was in your proposed plan. It looks like there's some elevation in your front yard. Do you have to have a small retaining wall?
Yeah, there is. There will need to be a small retaining wall, not, not too much. Our contractor and the draftsman included it, that it should be below the thirty inches. Obviously, there'll be some parts underground, but so that we wouldn't need a guardrail.
Right, okay. Thank you. That's it.
You're welcome. Stephanie, do you have any questions? Stephanie, I'm not sure if you can.
Yeah, you can't, you can't call on me that quickly. I can't get off mute. No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Any questions coming from others in the audience right now? Okay, not seeing any questions. Okay, therefore, I'm happy to have a discussion as a council about this variance, if anyone has any comments to make.
Yeah, I just have a question regarding the increase in, in surface area and what impact that's going to have on neighboring residents.
Yeah, we calculated that non-ventilated front yard surface coverage is less than thirty-five percent, even with the span and driveway. Additional improved surface coverage has less than seven hundred square feet, so water drainage plan is not required. You know, I guess the driveway would be ditched, you know, out toward the street. I'm guessing because of the slope of the hill, there's some of that water probably comes down the sidewalk. And some of it probably goes out the driveway equit. But it's, you know, not a substantial change in the improved surface coverage, so there won't be a ton of damage.
Thank you. Great. Any other discussion points? Happy to entertain a motion.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Stephanie. Aye, you have your variance. You obviously need to wait until officially comes in, but congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for doing your part on, on getting the car off of, yeah, off Aspen Street and wishing you well.
Thank you so much. Thank you for all your help.
Sure.
All right.
All right. All right, the next public hearing that we are having is an ordinance to regulate electric vehicles charging stations and, excuse me, charging stations in the public right-of-way. This is essentially those homes that are unable to install a charging station in their own driveway or garage or whatever the case might be and require something to be put in the town's public right-of-way. Then this is an ordinance that, that controls what that is going to look like and what the conditions might be. I am happy to hear any public comments about this ordinance. So if there are, if there isn't an ability for someone to install an EV charging station on their own property for various reasons. You, you, yes, anything that's on your property, if you want to install an EV charger, that's separate. What we're talking about is if there's conditions present where someone is unable to install an EV charger, and it could be for various reasons, the driveway width is too narrow. There isn't just, I don't know, different, different conditions. They share driveway situation, whatever. So what we're then looking at is we don't want to discourage the use of EVs. So therefore, the idea of putting a charging station in the, in that median strip, right at the end of your driveway is a possibility, assuming that there are certain conditions met. So that's what this ordinance is talking about. If you have a comment, if you have a comment, you come on up and provide a comment and just introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Adam Orgel. I live at four one one eight Aspen Street, and that's Bentley. I think it would be cool to have EV charging stations here at the town center, and that would encourage people to have electric cars, which would save on gas.
Yep, thank you. Thanks for that. That is also being discussed. Any other comments about the ordinance here? Okay, hearing none. We are closing the public comment period for this. So I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues for any questions, discussions about this ordinance.
I have none. I think we've discussed this at length before and reviewed the language and appreciate the changes that were made to incorporate exactly the sentiment you just described, that, that if it's clear to a resident who might have difficulty that, yes, they have to go through a variance process, but we'll entertain that. And so I'm perfectly comfortable with the ordinances as now drafted.
Okay. Did a, Stephanie, any comments or questions?
No, I agree.
Okay, happy to entertain an ordinance, a, a, she's
Motion.
Motion for this ordinance.
I move that we approve the electric vehicle charging stations and right-of-way obstructions ordinance.
I have second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Wonderful. Great. So we're going to move into the council actions and discussions portion of the agenda. First is, now that we've passed this ordinance, there is a resolution to adopt those standards and restrictions for those EV charging stations in the public right-of-way. It's all going to go through a variance process, but it'll help current council and future councils. If there's kind of a guardrails around what it is that we should be looking at as we are considering the conditions, the, of, of the variance. So I am happy to open that up if that was inclusive, if those instructions were inclusive enough. If they were unclear or clear. And Stephanie, I'm happy to.
No, I just, I just wanted to remind everybody that we didn't do this in a vacuum. The county already has
Right.
That's right. These kinds of standards and we significantly have incorporated those into our own regulations.
Very good point. Thank you. Anyone?
I just have a question. It's really more for staff. So yeah, thanks, Rich, for pointing out that we have hewed quite closely to the Montgomery County standards for such charging stations that cannot be installed on a person's property. What about when, you know, we have a process now within the town that we go through periodically. It'll, you know, harmonize our own code with county codes that may change. So can I assume that that would also just be, this would be part of that review, these set of standards? Or do we need to say that somewhere in here? Like if the county ends up changing, I don't know, whatever requirements they have for installation of such charging stations, does that need to be part of our explicit process here with respect to standards and?
Ron, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we dealt with that in a prior reconciliation of the county code with us. And we essentially said in that in, in that what do we call it? The coordination of the, of the county and our rules that if a, if that section, that section pertaining to the county code that we have in our code, if it changes, we automatically assume that that's brought into the, to our ordinances.
If we adopted that chapter.
If we adopted that chapter, right.
So is it?
That's right. But the regulations or minimum standards and restrictions that we borrowed from the county aren't codified in the county code. They're just set forth in regulations at the county level. So to Joyce's question, they would not automatically be applicable in the town unless we updated our policy as well. Or unless we included language in our policy to state we're going to adopt county standards as they may be amended from time to time. Is that what, is that what you were, you're getting at, Joy?
Yeah, that's what I was asking, just, you know, in case there's a, I don't know what the change would be, but again.
I would say, I would say we're not bound by only these standards. So we're adopting these as our minimum standards to help guide variance processes. But we always have the ability to impose additional standards in connection with a variance. So based on the specific circumstances, if some other condition is justified or you know, we, we do become aware of a different county standard and we haven't had time to update our policy, we could still impose that new requirement as part of the variance process. But as currently written, this would require us to periodically take a look at the county standards and see if they've been updated.
Yeah, I did not realize that it wasn't codified at the county level. But yeah, so somebody's got to be vigilant if it changes. We'd have to, I guess the PSC would be involved in that more than anybody else.
But the other way to look at it though is that because this, this particular resolution is a guiding policy. And as our council or future councils do their due diligence around a variance that it affords us the additional flexibility, right?
During the variance process.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So I'm not sure. So I'm not sure it binds us as much as
Provides like a
Yeah, and, and maybe it needs to, to, to have an extra step in here that just says or a, a, a different, a bullet point that just says, go check this county, you know, I don't know if it would be just to make sure. I don't know.
Yeah, the county's regulations are per county rights and ways, and they generally don't apply to town rights and ways. So even though we've adopted some of their standards, we've also added some of our own related to our urban governance and some other things.
I see.
So even if the county changes theirs.
It may not be applicable.
Once automatically that's.
True, yeah, we wouldn't be, want to be bound by it, but if there's an additional piece of information, it might be useful. Yeah.
Okay.
Review it from time to time.
Okay.
Depending on the applications to get.
Right.
See what's working, what's not working. Continue to rely on counties again.
True.
We, we, we would probably hear those concerns in the variance process itself.
True.
I mean, the resident would say, hey, you know, I tried to follow your, your suggestions, but I just couldn't do it. And so here's my alternative.
And let's be clear, we're talking a very small number
Yeah, we're not talking.
Of, of, of home sites that are in potentially
Right.
Situation.
They couldn't, they, right.
On top of whether they would want to buy an, an electric vehicle. Okay, great. Any other points here? I am happy to entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move, I move that we adopt the resolution for the standards and restrictions for electric charging stations installed in the public right-of-way.
Second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, unanimous. Thank you.
And we'll give that an effective date of April eleventh to coincide with the ordinance just adopted.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you. The next item up for discussion is the county zoning text amendment twenty-five oh two workforce housing legislation. For those on the, on the line that might be interested. Councilmember Fritzen in early February introduced, along with five other co-sponsors, introduced legislation that would allow for lots that are abutting a designated corridor. So the corridor itself needs to be at least three lanes of traffic. It doesn't matter which direction. And the lot itself needs to have the address that corresponds with the corridor. And for the town of Chevy Chase, that would mean lots that have a Connecticut Avenue address and lots that have an east-west highway address would be impacted by this legislation. What it effectively means is that that lot, were it to be redeveloped, there would be an allowance for, through the optional method of development, would not be by right to allow for a developer or an owner to construct a duplex, a triplex or bigger, assuming that fifteen percent, when it's at least three units in that building, fifteen percent of them must be workforce housing, which is different than moderately priced dwelling unit workforce housing. Attempts to provide housing for those that are making within an area median income of seventy-one to one hundred and twenty percent of area median income. So for a couple of two, sorry, a couple, two people, they, that would mean about a hundred and forty thousand dollars or less in household income, and they would be eligible for this workforce housing. Yesterday, there was a public hearing on this legislation. Between the afternoon and the evening public hearing, approximately eighty people testified. The town submitted its testimony. It's going, it's available online if anyone wants it, but we'll, we'll make sure to also include it in the town crier on Friday. We, as a town council and town, we, we received feedback from the land use committee members, the long-range planning committee members, and effectively came in with a set of recommendations for how to make the legislation more effective and more impactful per its intent. And if I did a quick count of the afternoon session, so it went on for about four and a half hours. There were twelve people, including myself, that were favorable with amendments. That spoke twenty-seven people that were no, complete opposition. And thirteen people that were in favor of this legislation. So if you add the favorable with amendments and favorable, it equates to the number of people in opposition. And apparently the evening session went about the same way. The, I reached out, the press that was there, I provided a copy to Bethesda Magazine of our written testimony. And Voice of America was also there, so I, I gave a written comments to the, actually talked with, with the reporter for quite a while as well. Because there's some confusion about what the legislation was going to do. The afterwards, councilmember Fritzen reached out and thanked us for our thoughtful testimony. And we're planning to have a conversation in the coming weeks. Just talking through the, the points that were made and, and kind of coming to a resolution about them, hopefully getting some, some good answers. The intent right now is to keep the public record open until March twenty-fourth. We've asked that it stay open until there's a vote on this legislation. But right now it stands at, at March twenty-fourth. Councilmember Fritzen will be coming here to the town hall on April fourteenth, which will be after the pub Planning Housing and Parks Committee, PHP Committee, meets for the first work session that they're going to have. And the hope there is between the work session, the conversation that I'll have with councilmember Fritzen, and then the ability for councilmember Fritzen to come here, we'll get all of our questions answered so that we can then put in our final kind of testimony before, before a vote takes place. So that's where things are at. Any, any questions? April fourteenth, yeah, it's a Monday.
Yeah.
First of all, Irene, thank you very much for your stalwart effort on all this. Mastering the details and putting it into draft after draft, so thank you very much. One thing I wanted to point out to my colleagues was one of the changes that we made toward the end was to specifically reference the compatibility portion of the county zoning code. And with the review, I understand with you, Ron, we feel that all we really need here is a confirmation that that piece of the code will in fact be tied to the CTA if it is passed. But that actually, I hope, is, is assuming we get that confirmation, would, would reasonably address concerns of the neighbors who are immediately adjacent in the town to these potentially new developments right on Connecticut or east-west highway. Because it requires an extra amount of setback for taller buildings and also requires the forty-five degree angle, which effectively reduces the sense of and size of the, of the building on the back side, the front side doesn't matter as much. So anyway, I, I hope that that's something which was picked up on by, by councilmember Fritzen, that we'll be able to get that confirmation.
Thank you, thank you. Great. Anything else? Yes?
Yeah, I'd like to thank members of the long-range planning committee for contributing content for our testimony. There's going to be quite a lot of discussion, I think, about this on a go-forward basis between now and whenever the county council votes on this. But I, you know, I'm, I'm very proud that, you know, they were able to come forward with some very substantive information for the council to consider.
For sure. Yeah, thank you. Great work. Okay, so TBD on, I guess, after April fourteenth as to next steps there. But there, something will be done, looks like it anyway. Next item is the Corso Construction Management Agreement. And I will turn it over to Todd to, to go through the questions that he has for us.
Well, I don't really have any questions other than this, this construction management agreement effectively is to guide and, and, and reiterate to Corso and to, to ensure that they're aware of and abide by all the construction-related regulations that we have with respect to noise and hours and general permit conditions, dust control. We reiterate our work hours and we go through a number of categories of, of items that, that we believe should be amended to the permit that Corso, the building permit that Corso signs. This will be signed separately, but amended to the, to the building permit. It, it, it addresses project scope, summarizes project scope, provides general permit and work requirements about permit posting and modification of plans. Continuing to work if work or a permit has been suspended or revoked. It deals with communication, how Corso should communicate to us and with the community. It deals with noise, work hours, trash and dust control, traffic and parking. Specifically with respect to construction vehicle access points, ingress, egress from the site onto Connecticut Avenue. It addresses pedestrian access and sidewalk safety, disruption of the right-of-way due to utility connections and, and the maintenance of the public right-of-way. It addresses erosion and sediment controls, tree removal and tree protection. What they've agreed to with respect to invasive plant removal. So it effectively is a summary of our requirements that we impose on every building permit as well as special conditions that they've agreed to through our negotiations with them during the, the LMA process. But if any council member has any questions regarding the provisions in this document, I'm happy to discuss them, but I don't have any specific questions for you.
Okay, I know that Barney had some suggestions, but I wanted to open it up to see if there are any general questions first.
I've got some specifics.
You have some specifics. Were there, did you have any general, Stephanie, did you have any general questions? Okay, Rich, why don't you go ahead with specifics?
I just wanted to, I'm, under the utility connections and public right-of-way conditions. I think you may want to add a, you're not, we're only concerned about the town's public right-of-way, right?
Yeah, we, that's what a comment Barney's made, and we put utility connections and work in the town right-of-way will be.
Yeah, right, right. So just being editorial in the town public right-of-way.
That's right.
But there, there may be instances when work in the, in the county, in the state right-of-way along Connecticut might need to be coordinated with the town. So I just want to raise that as an issue that we might want to consider. That work in the, in the right-of-way doesn't necessarily mean it has to be in the town right-of-way, but it could be in the, in the, in the state right-of-way along Connecticut that would need to be at least coordinated with the town. But we'll work on, we'll wordsmith that a little bit.
Yeah, because that, I, I mean, the way it's, the way it's stated now, it looks like you would, we would, we would need to, they, they would need to get our approval and, and coordination. And that's fine for the town right-of-way, but not for the county, right?
Sure, we'll, we'll, we'll clarify.
Yeah.
Thanks, good catch there. Any other comments on that, Joy? Any other that comes to mind now?
Okay, Barney, go ahead. You had some good stuff.
Well, you said, Rich, I, I, it's one of the comments I made as well.
That's right.
It ought to be clear that we're talking about permits, we're talking about town issues, town permits. Otherwise, a reader without context would say, wait a minute, you, you're asking for the veto rights or approval rights for permits issued by the county. So just, Todd, we, you know, that's an easy clarification. The only other changes I suggested really were in the section of the notifications. I thought we could be a bit more specific. And I ask that at the beginning of every quarter, we get a statement from Corso of what are the main expected development activities for that quarter? And I, you know, we know, that we, we know that from working with the purple line, they do this six months ahead. Frankly, I haven't found looking ahead six months to be very reliable. So I figured asking for three months is probably reasonable, and we ought to know what they do plan to do within each three-month period. But incremental to that, anytime there's going to be some major event or some major disturbance, there have, you know, and here to me, the analogy is the fact that every time there's any blasting that's done for the development at the purple line down to the south entrance of the red line, they have to come up with an announcement. So I don't know whether there's any blasting or not, I suppose some may be required. But the point is, if there's some major disturbance, they need to notify us specifically about that and give us the chance to notify residents. Basically, it's just to put a few specifics there in that discussion of communication. But overall, I thought it was a very comprehensive agreement and covered, you know, all the things that we'd want to see done. And I think it was, it's a good roadmap and could, I hope, lead to a fairly harmonious process while they're, while they're building it. So thank you, Todd, for that work.
Well, I have a follow-up question about that. Maybe you can answer, Todd. Because I think they mentioned in here that they're going to maintain a website for people to just sort of know what's going on there. And is it customary that the existence of such a website would constitute notification in cases like what Barney just mentioned? You know, if there's going to be like a major disturbance or, you know?
So like, included on their website, but we also have under that provision that they periodically provide construction progress updates, but with Barney's revision, I think that, let me, let me read it here a second real quickly. May maintain, shall maintain a website with periodic construction updates and estimated timelines referenced by the town and town residents. But with Barney's proposed amendments, providing anticipated major activities for the quarter. And they shall alert the town to any upcoming activities that would cause major disruption or noise. And it says the town will update residents of upcoming work through various communication methods and will hand deliver notices to adjacent property owners as necessary. So it's a, but both a push-pull prospect here that will get the information. I mean, they'll provide, we'll, we'll provide the website address to all residents for periodic updates. But if they're going to give us at the outset of each quarter, a scheduled anticipated major activities for that quarter and, and alert us to any upcoming activities, then we'll push that information to residents via forecast and town crier, et cetera.
Okay, that was what I was aiming for. I didn't want it to rest on a website, because a lot of people are kind of looking at what.
Exactly, that's what.
I want the chance, I want them to have an affirmative obligation to notify the town. And then we can easily file for the town crier, so every resident has every reason to.
Right, exactly. So it's both, it's, residents comply information as they see fit, but we'll push it out as well, given the fact they need to give us these updates of each, at the outset of each calendar quarter. They're, they're, they're really good communicating with respect to communication. I expect Kelly Panter and I will work very closely together during the course of construction. Or that, yeah, or my successor will, whenever it starts. But she's, she's a very good communicator. She's very, very engaging and, and, and responsive and communicative. And I, I'm, I'm happy that we have such a good communicator and, and someone who is responsive to us, and I think they will do all they need to do to make sure we're, we're fully apprised of, of upcoming work.
I have a question about the parking. Where, you know, we're quite specific here in this, in this agreement that there is to be no parking on town streets by anyone who's working on that site. Are those streets now zoned parking in the
Permitted parking?
Permitted parking?
Not, not.
So so how, so if we were to ask our off-duty police officers who do patrol the other end of the town, you know, over by Elm Street Park, for example. You know, they do look at whether cars have permits there. How is anybody going to know whether somebody parking on Thornapple should be parking on Thornapple?
Well, we'll, we'll monitor it constantly for any increase that we see observationally from an increase in parking. And make no mistake about it, we'll hear from the residents over there if that's the case.
I know, I'm trying to anticipate that.
Sure, and if need be, we can institute, you know, either, we can either, we, we will post signs. I, I believe Dave and I discussed this, we will, we will post signs that says no, they say no construction parking. And we will monitor that and enforce it. But we can put up temporary signs rather than making a permit parking right now. Ultimately, long-range, we may want to do that when the, when the facility commences operations. But for now, we'll post no construction parking and, and we'll monitor it and we'll enforce it as needed.
Well, I enforce that as part of the permit conditions, not as a
Right.
violation under the code.
You're right, that's correct. It's part of the permit conditions, yes.
I'll have to go to Corso or to JFW or to, or to Davis.
Right.
provisions in their contracts, but their subcontractors not to park on town streets, so they will have to go through them to enforce that through the permit.
And of course, if the residents feel as if that there's still an opportunity that, that, that things could slip through the cracks, they could put forth a petition to become a permitted street.
Exactly.
So there, there should be that level of communication as well. If they're not satisfied with this agreement as it's currently stated, we, they could be encouraged to apply.
Yes. My, my own, my own view is especially for phase one, there's going to be ample space on the site for, for, for parking for the construction workers. I'd be surprised if there would be any great demand for town streets by the construction workers. We'll find out, but there's to be plenty. I think it might become more problematic when they get to phase two, because I'm quite sure where they're going to park. But that's a long ways away. So I think for phase one, let's, let's wait and see if there's a problem.
Stephanie, were there any questions about the? No? Okay. So I think we're good to go, assuming the changes that have been submitted and discussed this evening. And the idea that when that document is updated and transmitted over to Corso and Kelly in advance of the April meeting, it will also be marked draft watermark or something draft and sent to the adjacent residents too.
Correct.
Okay. Great. Let's move on to our next Bradley Lane pedestrian vehicular traffic management. And we have a special guest star here.
Yeah. Arrived on time.
Oh, got it. Yeah, we're running ahead.
Thanks, Barney. Good, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council members. Great to be back in front of you this evening. How, my name is Howard Burkhoff. I'm Chair of the Public Service Committee, just raised a little bit. And we've been studying the Bradley Lane over the last few months, really two separate issues that I'm going to draw to your attention this evening. One is a traffic concern at the intersections at both ends. One is at Wisconsin and Bradley, one is at Connecticut, Wisconsin. So we were asked to kind of take a look at that. During rush hour periods, they back up pretty significantly and there's been comments and feedback from town residents. Hey, can we look at alleviating some of that? The second issue that we looked at is safety on Bradley Lane, concern about specifically, as we all know, the sidewalk is, is right on the road. And so there's always been concern about speed of cars and, and, and how that conflicts with the pedestrians and potentially bikers that are on that sidewalk. It's a narrow sidewalk. So we, we embarked on a journey actually last year where we had some engagement with the Bradley Lane residents. They were concerned about excessive speeding on Bradley Lane and through a resident initiative, successfully petitioned the county to install a speed camera on the south side of Bradley Lane. So going east. And that was happened, but we were asked to take a look at those two issues. So we did. And in December, we hosted a listening session here at the town hall where we invited all the residents of Bradley Lane to come and just listen to their concerns and feedback. We, we informed them that we were looking at both intersections for potential widening to help alleviate some of the traffic concerns. And we also told them that we were looking at safety concerns and wanted to solicit their feedback and ideas. So in summary, universally, all residents who attended were opposed to widening each, e- either end, either intersection. And they're very concerned about if we widened on either end, that would invite more traffic. And their, their desire is to help slow traffic down on that street. So the, their thought was that they like the traffic backups because it slows it down and keeps fewer people off the street. They're concerned if we widen it, that cars would go, you'd invite more traffic and more cars going faster, and that's not what they want. So that was universal feedback from the Bradley Lane residents. We also listened to their concerns about safety and they all believe, they all stated their concerns about cars traveling fast and is there other measures that we can take to mitigate the speed of traffic and help make it safer for pedestrians? So they suggested ideas such as adding speed bumps, adding a, a stop sign at, at Maple and adding another speed camera on the other side. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the speed camera that was installed. We engaged with the county and not me, but Todd engaged with the county and learned that two things. One is that, actually three things. One is that the speed camera, they are looking at the ability to do two-way speed enforcement with that one camera, did not give a specific date of when that could be implemented. Number two, based on feedback from residents that said they haven't been seeing flashes go off on the camera. We learned that the county actually doesn't have enough cameras to fulfill all the speed cameras that have been installed in the county. So they actually rotate them. So we don't really know when they rotate a real camera in there and when they take it out and move it to a different location. So that was interesting feedback learning. And number three, the reason why they didn't install a speed camera on the north side going the other direction is because they didn't, they didn't perceive there was enough sufficient public land to install one. And if they were going to install one, it would require, from their perspective, putting it on private property or, you know, kind of in intruding on someone's private property. So that's why they didn't do that. So that was good feedback for us. Also during this conversation, as we talked about the intersections, there was concerns raised about safety across at the crossing of Connecticut at, at, at Connecticut, like Bradley and Connecticut, specifically the south side crosswalk. There was a safety concern raised that a car coming east on Bradley Lane, turning right, going south on Connecticut cannot see pedestrians at the crosswalk waiting to cross. And that proposes a safety hazard. There's a stone wall at the corner there at the Chevy Chase Club, which prevents that line of sight view. And, and, and so they express it. And actually, we, Barney and I looked at that and, and I, I validate that. That's a real concern. Looking at it, there is a real safety concern there that a car that's turning right will not see a pedestrian and that increases risk of pedestrian safety. So that was, that was new, new learning from, from the committee. Okay. So we listened to all this feedback and then last month in our February meeting, we, 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 the Public Service Committee then discussed that feedback and came up with a, a potential recommendations or a path forward. And that's what I'm, I'm presenting this evening. So number one, the committee did not feel that and, you know, asking the state highway administration to install speed humps or a stop sign at Maple was, was feasible. We just didn't think that was, that was something that the, the state would consider. So we're not recommending that. We, we talked about first the, the, the intersections, the intersections on either side. The committee felt that the Connecticut Avenue and Bradley Hills intersection was not worth pursuing any changes. And we perceived that, that in order to widen would require reclaiming land likely on both sides, frankly, from both south and north side. And that would be imposing on the Chevy Chase Club and also on residents on the south side. Our perspective was the juice, it just isn't worth the squeeze on that side. So then we talked about the other side, Bradley Lane at Wisconsin Avenue intersection. And after all the feedback, the universal feedback from the residents, the committees major, and I want to say, use my words carefully, a majority of committee members still support a widening of that intersection. Again, we know the residents are not in favor, but we perceived other town residents, not on Bradley Lane, and we've gotten feedback in the past, we've talked about in the past, that there is a desire to to help lessen the traffic there, the, you know, the, the major backups that happen at that, at that intersection. So again, I use those words carefully, a majority, not all, but a majority of committee members decided to make a recommendation to the town council to consider asking the state highway administration to look at that intersection and alleviate the traffic backups by, by widening. And we felt that the, the land on the south side, the Chevy Chase land isn't really being used for anything. So there's potential to extend now. We also recognize state of Maryland is in a phenomenal fiscal deficit right now. And that widening in the intersection is, is going to be costly because you got to relocate some poles and some other obstacles there. So realistically, would the state even consider something like this at this time in this fiscal budget? We, we understand that may or may not be a realistic possibility. However, we wanted to bring that to your level for consideration, whether today or in the future. I would expect Bradley Lane residents will come out in full force against a proposal like that. So want to, want to state that. Okay. So now moving on to the safety concerns, I mentioned the we, 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 we kind of dismissed the speed bumps in the stop sign. But the committee does universally endorse asking the town council to look at that crossing at Connecticut. We, we all universally agree that is a safety hazard, a safety concern. And we would request the town consider bringing that to the state highway administration for looking at. Not sure, potential solutions could be looking at the stone wall mitigating that or moving the crosswalk into a better line of sight. There's probably some solutions there that the state can look at to improve safety. So that was a universal recommendation. Another recommendation from the committee is to, is is to look at the fire hydrant. I, it's at least one, I'm not sure it might be two, that are in the middle of the sidewalk, this narrow sidewalk that just is not helpful, right, for pedestrians and bikers, really not helpful. So we would ask the town council to consider looking at moving those. I believe engagement with the utility, people would say it would be a town expense if we wanted to move that. So that would be an, a town expense right from the whoever owns those to, if we were to move those. But we, we think that that's a worthwhile expense, giving the, really the narrowness of the sidewalk, just that would improve safety. And then the other safety measures that we, we recommend for consideration, but really require resident support for, and you know, we don't, I'm not, I don't want to advocate telling residents, someone's going to have to give. But if a resident were willing to offer their land to support an additional speed camera, we would certainly support that. To support adding a permanent speed board, right, to help, help raise attention to drivers, that would be very helpful. We did do last year, the, there was a temporary speed board that was established to help collect data and a resident volunteered their property for that. So there is a possibility that someone might offer their property for either permanent or a period of time. And then the, the, the third option is to widen this, widen the sidewalk to get just, you know, off the road a little bit more. That if the residents agreed to doing that would be great and I would highly endorse town investment into widening the sidewalk. I am a little skeptical that resident, that all the residents will agree to support that. So that, that's an option. And then of course, the focus last, I think it was last year that we talked about the, the pruning of shrubs, that it's really important on that road to enforce that, right? That of any road in the town, that is the road where we've got to enforce the pruning of the bushes to, because the sidewalk is just so narrow there. So that's a summary of the, the Public Service Committee's assessment and feedback and recommendations and pause here for questions, comments or concerns.
Thank you. Please.
Thanks, Howard. That was really an excellent, excellent summation of what you guys have been considering. I really appreciate, you know, the whole committee's contributions to this. And I, you know, echo everyone's concerns about that. The Bradley, Wisconsin Avenue not going to say the word, cluster there. And I'm wondering if, if you've also talked about whatever might be done with that actual light. The reason I mention that, if you know, you know, in downtown Bethesda, I think it's Bethesda Avenue and Arlington, they've changed that light now so that, I mean, it is kind of dreadful for if you're in a car, but if you're not in a car, it's fantastic. Because you, you have to stand there and wait a lot, but then the light changes and then all of a sudden there's just, it's just open for everybody to cross the street. The problem with that Wisconsin Avenue Bradley thing is that, you know, there's like that third turn lane is enough for like two cars. And then you have like three seconds to turn until the light changes. And I'm wondering if we've talked with DOT or if it's the county about, so is, is it state or county that would regulate that light and could they change? I mean, again, it's going to slow down traffic, but on the other hand, I think it could, you know, it might give, it give us some relief.
For pedestrian crossing?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a good, so that's a great question at that intersection. I, I, I'm guessing it's, the lights managed by the state, the county, county, yeah. So that's a, it's a fantastic question. I, I, I'm going to just shoot from the hip and say, because Wisconsin is such a heavily traveled road, that might be a, a bigger lift than the Arlington and Bethesda. And, and as I've, as I've been educated by members of this committee, the state is, their objective is to move cars, not to slow them down. So I, I don't know if at that intersection, how that would go, but I mean, it's certainly worth exploring.
Well, yeah, just so if you recall, I don't know if you were here actually at that meeting, but this was, I believe it was in this term, it was the beginning of this council. And Councilmember Glass came and talked to us about the Vision Zero initiative across the county to increase pedestrian safety. And so this would seem to me to would fit into that ethos of increasing pedestrian safety. And, you know, there are always trade offs between moving traffic, but you know, I, I find that a rather hazardous intersection. That is not a place that I would want to cross.
Understood. Yep.
So is it two letters that, a request, one is specifically around pedestrian issues?
Pedestrian safety, yep.
And Bradley, potentially Wisconsin and Bradley, and then the separate kind of
Traffic flow.
Flow.
Right, right. And, and I spent a lot of time really trying to, to separate those, especially with the listening session with the Bradley Lane residents. Like they're, we're, we're talking about two issues, but they are separate. And I wanted to get, so I was very strict about, we're going to talk about traffic flow first, and then we will go into the pedestrian safety section.
Okay.
So we, we felt that the state, SHA would be more receptive to a safety concern. And that's why we would separate those, right? And, and the, the traffic flow and the backup, given again, I not sure how they would react to that, given their fiscal situation right now.
Okay.
As liaison to the committee, I wanted to thank Howard for his leadership and going through all these issues. And in particular, reaching out to the residents and making sure they had the chance to speak and we hear from them. So that, that's really very, very well done. I, I think we, my personal view is we take all these suggestions seriously. But we focus initially on what we in the town can potentially do something about directly. And, and so I'd like to suggest to my colleagues, and by the way, this is all just discussion. I don't know what Irene, how much you want to get done tonight versus having a discussion and decide what the subject is to be. But I completely can, going first, what I think is really easy to do, which is indeed a letter from the town to the SHA encouraging the pedestrian safety be improved at Connecticut Avenue. As, as Howard did, I also went to that intersection and I was shocked. I was really shocked. You're standing there ready to cross and the cars on Bradley that want to turn south don't have a clue you're there. And, you know, the solutions would be either that stone wall gets moved back some feet, which it could be, there's no, you're just taking away from shrubbery from nothing, no parking or anything like that from the country club. Or they actually move the crosswalk from the south side of the intersection to the north side of the intersection, which would improve visibility very substantially. So there are solutions to it, but I think as, as we are effectively pushing on a string, it's up to the, up to the state. But it's not the county for the signalization, it would be the state, right? That has to prove it. But I think I would, I think this is a very easy thing for us to do and something we, we should do. I think the, what I heard from the residents is real, real passion, going on to a separate topic, real passion about the wanting to slow down the cars and really do so on the north side of Bradley, which of course runs right by all their homes. And in the course of some correspondence with some residents, one did volunteer to say, yeah, I'd be willing to have something on my property. That's not crazy thought. So, you know, that is, is not, it's something I think well worth an endeavor to find out. What I'd welcome is some further discussion and thought, and maybe this goes back to the town office first, as to what would be a recommended mix, if you will, of traffic calming devices that we can undertake. Be they you know, trying to get another camera, which I guess requires currently approval from the county. Or a speed board, and does that require? And does that require approval from the county also, or can we put up a speed board on our own? From, from this, okay. But, um, Well, could we, could we, well, suppose, all right. So I guess, yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to sort of think about this in terms of what's in our control versus where we're pushing on strings. So if it were the case that we could put up a speed board on private property, uh, and potentially even two, uh, if we had two different residents appropriately located who are willing to put one up, could we just go ahead and do that, um, even without getting S H A's approval? That would be good to know. But I'm just, I don't want to push ahead for undue decision making tonight, but I would just welcome town staff getting engaged and thinking about what combination of boards, camera, where they should be on the north side. And, and then we could discuss how we can approach residents to see if they're willing to do this. But we did, since, since we do have one resident who's already said yes, uh, it certainly seems like that's a plausible thing that we could expand on.
I've got, I've got a suggestion and we, this came up, what, probably six years ago. And we were talking about the traffic study in the town and we talked about things like calming the, the traffic on Bradley and so forth. But one of the thoughts that we had back then was you could put up a speed board on, on, on private property. You could also put up what I'll call a phantom radar board, you know, on that you have a speed sign and then you have a camera on it. And, and what's, what's interesting is I did not realize that the county does that already. Essentially those, those speed boxes that don't have cameras in them are phantom boxes.
They drive behavior.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, so.
Cause you don't know.
No, they don't, you don't know. So let's think about not just a speed board, but putting a phantom camera on there to make people think that there's that's right. We even need them all. No, it's just a thought.
Well, I'm saying, I think perhaps I'd like to hear the town staff and I don't know whether you want anyone else to get engaged to think about and come back to the council with some ideas. But I think we ought to be more grounded in what can be done and where, where it would make sense to do it. Uh, but then if we do get some solid recommendations, go back to residents and say, here's some thoughts. Would anyone volunteer to let their property be used? Um, and I'm assuming that there really is not any public space. And I say that because the public space presumably would be at the intersection of the corners. But you don't want any, any devices, um, affecting sightlines for motorists. I presume that's the problem.
They also wouldn't do that much good at the corners.
Because you think people slow down anyway. Is that your thought?
I mean, unless you're gunning it to make it through a light, in which case a light camera would catch that.
Yeah, that's, of course, the, the, the devices could be looking a long ways down the block. So they don't, but, uh, in which case the, the cars that could be caught wouldn't themselves yet be at an intersection. But in any event, I, at the moment, I'm just trying to think about what can be done in that space that's realistic. That's I guess the general point. And then the third one is, oh, and also the fire hydrants. I guess, um, I guess the dogs must like it, but I, but in any event, uh, should, are we interested in having a, at least a cost estimate of what that would be to move the hydrants? What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, you, you philosophically, you probably want to get, try and get their buy-in at least. Yeah.
My, I guess, my guess is that the buy-in is probably pretty doable. And if I, if I were there, I would show you the scar on my upper shin that I still have from having gone running and run into one of those fire hydrants about 15 years ago.
Yeah, the, the, the right of way line is very close to the end of the sidewalk. So there's not right of way to widen it.
We'd need their permission. Yeah.
Widen it into the travel lane, widen the whole road, uh, you know, the opposite path.
You know, the town right of way does not extend beyond, much beyond the edge of that sidewalk.
Correct. The state right of way, yeah. The corporate boundary is different than the town right of way. There's no town right of way on Bradley.
There is no town right of way.
No, it's S H A right of way.
But we maintain the sidewalk. Is that right?
Per state law. Yeah, we, per state law, we would, we're, per state law, we're responsible. When S H A installs sidewalks, we're responsible for maintaining them, improving them, maintaining them.
So that's a state highway administer, administration sidewalk, not a town sidewalk. Yeah, no, I'm just saying, it's, it's a state right of way.
The state right of way, we're responsible for.
And then past that, from the edge of that sidewalk is then private property. So we, so we could ask the citizens, the residents, if they would want us to extend the sidewalk. Understanding we'd have to get state highway approval to do it, right?
Yeah, if we're talking about feasible short-term solutions or reasonable effective short, that's not one. First of all, W S S C is going to be a bear to deal with in trying to extend and relocate fire hydrants. It's, it's, it, it would take, I mean, I can't imagine how long it would take and it might fall a completely flat. It's just not a feasible short-term solution to take, uh, private property and get an easement from all these property owners to extend the sidewalk or widen the sidewalk and to relocate the fire hydrants. I just don't see it happening.
But what, but what, just about the fire hydrants then?
I mean, it would be.
We started looking at the fire hydrants. Moving them to the inside of the sidewalk and put them on private property, which I'm not sure that the S S C regulations allow. And the other option would be to move them across Bradley Lane. But I think there's always been talk about the possibility of widening Bradley, you won't have to move them twice.
It's just not.
Did anyone ever, um, consider, uh, you know, the bollards, the flexible bollards that are on East West Highway? The idea of installing those on the sidewalk, um, so that at least when someone is walking along Bradley, there's a, a, a sense of comfort. Uh, nothing has changed in terms of the width, but because you have these yellow sticking up ball, is that something that anyone thought about or?
We could ask.
I'll speak, I'll speak to that as something we looked at, um, when the, on East West Highway. Uh, when, when the path for the kids getting to high school was closed off. Uh, and we were very concerned about the safety of kids using the sidewalk. And we asked for exactly that. Uh, we actually also asked for some of the barriers that D C puts in on the edge of sidewalks, which are very substantial. And the S H A came back and said, we will not do anything that suggests safety when it doesn't actually create safety. Uh, and so they would not do the bollards, we specifically asked them for that. And they don't consider what D C does to be sufficiently safe, so they wouldn't do that. In other words, they're saying basically, we, we, we are, we would be liable if we put up some kind of guardrail of some sort, which, uh, turned out not in fact to protect, protect a pedestrian. Because it wasn't up, especially if it wasn't up towards the standards that we've established in our state. So we prefer to do nothing and leave it clear that that's an unsafe area to walk or let the, let the person take up their own mind. This may sound crazy, but this is the way they looked at it. And I remember the conversation very vividly. And Todd, am I correct you? Cause you were there at this time too. We, we were specifically in regard to bollards. They said, no, 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 we're not going to do that.
So because that conversation occurred, say, seven years ago, do you think that, cause they were the same ones to install these stupid yellow, flashing lights that didn't provide any pedestrian safety either, but were a lot more expensive. Do you think that their thinking has evolved as their?
Well, I can't answer that. So maybe we could, they could, the question could be re-asked. Whether there is some, some, and again, I, I'm thinking specifically what D C does with actually some very thick wires, uh, and are very, very narrow.
I haven't seen that in D C.
Yeah, uh, and that, that you would think would, would in fact make it pretty, a car could obviously go over that, but it would be a very further additional impediment to any car getting up on a, on a sidewalk compared to nothing, right? So maybe there is some conversation there that we could have.
Okay.
Same players, same policies, they're only getting stricter and not lean, more lenient.
I don't know.
Telling you the reality of the situation is not going to happen. But we can make the
Well, I think then we can, we can consider going back to the county and saying, you know, we have this vision zero. Like something's got to give here, right? If you have a vision zero, um, then once again, working with our representatives to work with S H A, which is the only way it happened for the East West Highway red, red signalization, um, that was eventually installed. That maybe we have another six-year situation on our hands to try and figure out.
Could be.
Cause I can't see that we will be able to go into people's, uh, private property to extend the, the sidewalk. Plus, in a way, the situation would still be, and yes, you have one extra foot. You still feel a little, yeah.
Right, right.
I don't know what it would solve, like we'd go through a lot of pain versus putting something that, um, that i- is best practice in other parts of the, the country and
Foreign country just down the road.
Foreign country. And, uh, and utilize this vision zero, um, county policy as, as a backup to get some of our representatives to.
Yeah, I, one of the things that I, you know, one of, a lot of the decisions about those safety stuff is data driven. And so I'm, I, I don't know what the record is for pedestrian incidents along Bradley Boulevard. And if there aren't any that have been reported, the county's going to, the state is going to say, there is no problem there. Uh, so you've got, you know, there's a perception problem, but there's not a real problem.
But it could be also saying that so that there wouldn't be a funding.
I don't know. I mean, it's worth asking the, you know, it's worth asking questions of people to see if it's feasible.
So for now, I guess we're talking about sending a letter specifically around the pedestrian concerns. And then, uh, determining from a speed monitor. Cause I do feel like if, for these Bradley Lane residents, if there was this overall sense that speed has, you know, come enforceable, right? And, and you can see a difference, then they'd be open to other, um, possibilities, you know, uh, other, other solutions, you know?
Well, I think, I think it's the right order. I, the one I was going to come to is the hardest one, which is clearly the perspective widening at, at Wisconsin. Uh, first I agree with what, um, Howard said in the committee, that if there's anything, any discussion of widening, the only spot on which it makes any sense is on the Wisconsin side. Uh, and to make further clarity, we're not actually talking about widening at the intersection itself. We're actually, I think, talking about widening, uh, with the lane, Bradley lane, probably starting perhaps a hundred feet back where the current lane that's been created for cars turning south veers out, if you will. And, and basically we'd be extending that further east, uh, to say permit six or seven cars to stack up in that lane instead of only two or three. I mean, that's, that's kind of the, what we're talking about here, I think.
Yeah.
But, uh, Howard, I completely agree with Howard that the residents were emphatically opposed to that. There's no question about that. Uh, but, but I, I also say that that speaks for the residents, not necessarily for all the, those residents, not necessarily for the residents of the entire town. And we all use Bradley and we've all know how that gets backed up at Wisconsin. And I suspect we all have occasions when we see that there are two or three empty spots in that left turn lane, but you can't get to them because the cars are backed up beyond that place where that lane veers out. Uh, so clearly that issue remains. Uh, but I, I, my instinct is to say, let's, first of all, that's something which we cannot control. We'd have to, even if we approved it and wanted to go forward with it, we'd be pushing hard on S H A. Uh, and I think taking care of these other matters first should come up. And then I would recommend that if the count, the council did want to take up the idea of that widening, we first hold a, a, a public forum, I stress forum, not hearing, but a public forum. So that we on the council could hear from our residents, both those on Bradley, but also elsewhere in town, who might be very strongly in favor of widening that. So we can make sure that we hear from people directly.
The, I mean, I used, one of the things that I think is simplest is actually the speed board itself. And it would require getting one of the residents to agree to have the speed board. But I would strongly encourage if we look at that, we do look at a phantom camera on that as well. But that seems like something that's doable.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. That's, that's, those, those things come ahead of consideration. That's all I'm saying in terms of rank order of our dealing with all of these.
And what about, um, the adjustment of the signal, the left turn signal on Wisconsin?
That's worth asking, oh, sorry. I think, uh,
That's what, that's actually exactly what I was going to suggest. And I think I had raised this at a previous meeting when we were talking about this. It's really, really short. And even just, even adjusting that would be a huge help.
Well, I have reached out, if I, if I interject, I've reached out to the S H A about adjusting that signal, excuse me, the county and, and Michael Paylor. And they were going through some internal determination of responsibilities, you know? And we had asked at one point that if I'm not mistaken, the dedicated left turn signal onto southbound Wisconsin is triggered simultaneously with the northbound signal on the other side to northbound Wisconsin. And then those lights phase out and the straightaway goes through. If that signalization was changed to have the dedicated left turn and straightaway phase at the same time, you may have addressed the problem.
Yeah, I, I think it's the length of the, of the left turn signal. Left turn signal, right.
Um, the other thing I, I want to report is that I have had conversations with Dan McNichol, who is, who, who is the head of the automated traffic enforcement unit with M C D O T, M C P D, uh, excuse me. And they are looking at making the camera on Bradley that is exist, that exists there now on the south side. Um, they're looking into technology that will allow it to actually, um, enforce both the north and south sides of the road. And they're doing this evaluation currently in the spring of 2025. And we'll know very shortly if in fact, the technology allows them from one camera to enforce speeds in both directions, north and south, or excuse me, east and westbound in this case. So we, we've had these conversations with them and, and, and I think we, it would, it would, um, be worthy of a follow-up to see not only what the status of this new technology is with respect to allowing one camera to enforce both eastbound and westbound traffic, but also follow up Michael Paylor at M C D O T to determine signalization changes that could possibly improve traffic flow on Bradley without necessarily, at least as a first step, um, to see what could be done there, um, before we go any further.
Yep, that makes sense. Good.
Great.
Do you want me to quickly summarize what I think?
Yeah, go ahead. Please.
So we're in agreement that we will send a letter to S H A about pedestrian safety at Connecticut. We're in agreement that we'll ask the county D O T to look at the improving signalization at Wisconsin and Bradley to permit easier flow of cars onto Wisconsin. Okay. We, uh, would like to, uh, you're going to, you're going to, the town staff is going to run the ground, the prospect that the camera would can, can take pictures from both sides. But separate from that, I think we still would like to look at putting in a speed board and get recommendations from staff as to where you think one or even potentially two would make sense. But that's what we would then take back to residents to see if they're willing to have them installed. We would, I guess, we'd still like to see a cost of moving the fire hydrants, uh, on a standalone basis without further widening the sidewalk. And I guess the other one to consider is whether there is some kind of, I'll say guardrail, but something that can be done on the corner? Or do you want to leave that off for now?
No, it's, I, I just don't know how S H A is going to respond. It's all part of this pedestrian thing too. It could be part of that letter.
Yes, okay. We can add that to the
It would always be, I, I think it would always be better to go with, to them with some suggestions. And maybe we could get Cutro or something, one of the traffic engineers to look at it to see what would be appropriate. To look at it to see what would be appropriate. Bowls straight. Along that area and see what, what it would, just to get, have something as an ammunition from a professional.
Yep, that's true.
That knows, you know, to see whether or not it's even doable. It may take up too much of space on.
The sidewalk would be reduced to three feet.
Yeah.
Uh, so yeah.
Truthfully, be installed on taking up.
I, I don't know. I don't know what it takes to, to mount those things. They have to be drilled and mounted in and. Crack the concrete. I mean, you need a traffic engineer that, that knows what they're doing to look at alternatives there that would be using that. That could be effective.
You guys can, the town staff can look into that, right?
Oh, sure, easy, easy.
Yeah, for the stone wall, um. And probably before we send the letter, my kid took to take a look at that just to see what would be needed in order. To open up those sidelines.
Yeah.
Um, and see what options exist and. Historically had a pretty good relationship with the Chevy Chase Club, so. We can demonstrate to them that there's, you know, a public safety hazard that I suggested reaching out to them.
And they may, we may need. Well, you may not even need to if they agree to put the wall back there and. It solved the problem. Yeah, yeah.
Were they the ones that um? Were the catalyst behind the, the crosswalk being installed on that side anyway? I was wondering if they were like. Our clients are coming from, you know, section three and they need stay on that same side of the road or something. Okay.
Members of the club are walking across the road there, so they have an interest in keeping it.
Yeah.
And I think, I think some of their workers do cross there to get to the bus stop on the other side going. North, so I think it's, that's was a.
Yeah, that might be an easy way.
Hundred percent true. I've seen it, seen him cross, not at the crosswalk, very scary.
Okay. Thanks for all this work and giving us a lot to think about. Hopefully we can make some progress.
We'll be back in the future to talk about Stanford Hill.
Yes, yes.
Can't wait.
Very good. Thanks a lot, Howard.
Thank you. Great, so um our next update is on Bethesda Market Park, which is gonna be ultra short.
Not a.
Nothing. They're still working on the contracts, going back and forth in the si- in ether cyberspace.
Our, our, our understanding is that the uh. The county has now put together the full reimbursement contract. All this is just for the design work for the garage. They feel they have done all that they have to do. They've sent it over to the developers. And the developers are reviewing it. Uh, so the ball right now sits with the developers. Uh, specifically with Chuck Hathaway, the general counsel for, for the Bernstein, a management company. Um, I hope to speak to uh Chuck Hathaway on Friday to get his update on it. He's been very busy in other deals and so forth, but in any event, that's where it sits. So it's not with the county. It's with the developers, uh, and uh we can only hope that. There's no material issue left and indeed the document can be signed, but that's where it sits.
Uh, tangential to that is the um. The Capitol Crescent surface trail work, so that's a county side of things, right? Um, but because it's going to be on town. Uh, right of way, um, if you want to call it that, that uh there's an M O U that needs to be. And this thing has been kicked around for a really, really long time. Uh, Todd and I were talking about it earlier today. There's that, that corner of Willow and Forty Seventh Street, which is kind of a, let's just call it a mixing bowl, right? So you're gonna be having in the future from Bethesda Market Park, different pedestrians. Bicycle is coming from um across Wisconsin from Bethesda, we're making their way. Uh, uh, eventually through the park. On pedestrian bridge and making their way along the other part when uh, when purple line opens up. So there's gonna be like two phases associated with that mixing bowl. One is the condition. Just so that it's the Capitol Crescent Trail and get people, then phase two will be once Bethesda Market Park is in place. Then they're gonna look at the whole thing all over again to ensure that there's pedestrian. But the M O U covers both phases, even though we don't know what the ultimate design is going to be. Um, however, working through so that the, what the county will be responsible for and what the town will be responsible for. So the county will be responsible for maintaining the Capitol Crescent Surface Trail and everything associated with it. And the town is the asphalt and the sidewalks and all that kind of stuff, so. Uh, had a long discussion today to understand that a little bit better, but. That's also in process and it's in the county's hands right now, so. Uh, wanted to just let you know it's in progress. Good. The next uh is a technical amendment to the state law. To state law to clarify municipal regulatory authority. So a flurry of texts and phone calls today, thanks to. Um Barney as well for reaching out. Um, our uh uh H B eleven sixty seven. Is technically still in the um hearing, uh, committee hearing, uh, bullet. The, the, yeah, the, the transportation, transportation environment, which is headed up and are chaired by delegate Corman. And um, so the crossover date is Monday, midnight Monday, so uh.
Midnight, that's important.
Midnight is extremely important.
Not ten P M, midnight.
It is midnight. Uh, so um. Yesterday started to get a little concerned because of, you know, TikTok, yeah. So uh, we've reached out to um Delegate Solomon, we reached out to um his chief of staff, Eden Durbin. Uh, I reached out Senator Wall Striker and one of, one of his staffers as well as like, are you ready to catch the ball when, when it comes over? Um, and yeah, across the board, there's a uh, you know, general. Say positive feeling that it will make the crossover, but it's a little bit of waiting game. Um. So I, I had a further discussion today with Senator Wall Striker staffer. And said, okay, well, if it's Friday night, five P M, and I still see it in the same, you know, do I then start to get nervous? And she said, no, because they're gonna meet on Saturday as well. Um, there will be a Saturday session, so. Uh, again, it's Monday midnight that we're all kind of gearing for, and then. Once it goes over to the Senate, that's when all, you know, the work is, is gonna start up again in terms of our advocacy, but. The Senate side is, is well placed. The big hurdle for this was the, was the Montgomery County's. Delegation voting this unanimously, so it's just a waiting game to get this through. Um, but that's the update there. There's no sort of red flag, something's wrong, it's just a. Backlog of everything that needs to be getting through um the second and third hearing to get the crossover date. So that's what we know.
Uh, yeah, there were over three thousand bills.
How many?
Three thousand.
Three thousand?
Yes, submitted and.
On what?
I mean.
Yeah, we thought we had it.
Yeah, uh, three thousand, um. And for the M M L Legislative Committee. I think we've gone through maybe a thousand that may regard municipal law.
Really?
Yeah, so, so the other two thousand don't regard municipal law, and so really, um, so I went to. The Maryland General. Yeah, yeah, I was sitting there making sure Corman. Sitting right across from him.
Thank you.
Um, and uh. I was really, I, I just have to compliment Delegate Solomon, who's the one I talked to, um. I mean, the guy had a blistering amount of legislation in his head that he had to. Consider that day, just that day. So not even considering whatever else he had done the day before and what he had to do the day after. Um, it's quite extraordinary and some of the other folks that we talked to. None of them represent us, but I, I mean, it was really quite impressive, um, what they have. On the table for the three months of the session.
Yeah, the ninety days, it's quite strange how it's not extended, but I also heard that anything that. Ha- at least our bill isn't gonna cost anyone a dime, right? Because given, given the budgetary constraints. But anything that um is proposed to. Cost the state two hundred thousand dollars or more is going through an extra round of reviews. Um, and just because of everything that's going on and who, I don't know how it's gonna work out.
That, that reminds me of one, uh, Todd, I check. Is there any sunset date on the appropriations that been, that have been made for the Bethesda Market Park from the state? It's a total of four million dollars. Um, two and a half million to, to be channeled through the Parks Department and one and a half million to be channeled through us. Um, a four million altogether. Is there any sunset date?
I believe the top of my head is seven years, but I have to look.
Yeah, let's just keep that in mind. That, that money's not gonna be re-appropriated if it's lost.
No, no. Okay.
I, I will say, in the context of all this work, I'm reminded of a, a friend of mine who, who lives in Montana. And Montana had a legislature that met every other year. Then they decided that that wasn't frequent enough and they started meeting every year. And after a few years of that, they went back to meeting only every other year.
Yeah, I think Texas only meets every other year for a shorter amount of time, so everything is flurry. Um, thank you. So the next is uh Bethesda Downtown Minor Master, thank you, Howard. Minor Master Plan Amendment. You may wonder why is it on the agenda again? Well, apparently. That public hearing that, that you test was not the full public hearing. The full public hearing is gonna be on April first in front of the county council. I do not understand.
April Fools.
I do not understand why they, you know, uh, it's possible that. A master plan requires more than one public hearing. I don't know, but the um. The pub, the second public hearing, or in our case, second bite at the apple, is on April the first. I wanted to ask my colleagues, it's the same testimony. Um, do you want me to sign up to do an, an oral? I can do Stephanie's, I could do Joyce, I could make up another set. Depending on what the feedback was.
Well, how many council members were there for? Steph, who actually testified? You did joy. And how many council members were there?
I can't remember, I was on two. But wasn't sitting in the room.
You know, it's, it's, it's not gonna require any more writing or, I mean, you've got it.
Yeah, I think you might as well do it.
Deliver it.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go for it.
Okay, we'll sign up for that. And that's what you know I'll be.
Always rerun the message, can no harm.
Run the message for sure. Um, no problem, we'll do that. And uh Zimmerman Park redevelopment, I think we, uh, we had our work session on Sunday. Um, and decided that the fencing location um was, was quite adequate, but we're. Um, stepping down from a portion that had five foot height to four feet. And then uh we're going to be planting.
Yeah. They're bulging it out a bit.
Bulging it out of it, thank you. That was a big change. And then uh planting the trees that would be alongside maple. Uh, but we're gonna hold off uh in terms of the screening that would be towards. Uh, fa- if you will, facing east west highway, just to see what that's all gonna look like and if that, you know, whatever next. Next year as we go through a season, if it's necessary to do that, then, then we'll figure it out at that point. Um, but it looks fantastic again, I, and very, very good. Um, one last item that is not on this agenda, but um.
Can I speak about the Fossler path?
Oh, of course, I'm so sorry, yes, yes.
The um, uh, connected to the, to the redevelopment, um. Uh, we also are looking to a date to commemorate the Scott Fossler Path. Uh, and to unveil the um, uh, the plaque that has been made, and you've all seen a picture of that. Um, and the date is going to be April twenty sixth. It'll be, which is the same day as Trash and Treasures, but we're gonna do it at three P M. So it won't conflict with anything in the morning that involved the trash and traders. Um, and uh, we're in the process of making up invitations, uh, and um. Uh, we'll have uh, ask Irene to um unveil the, well, the, 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 the. Plaque and pedestal will be installed in advance, of course, but it'll be covered. Uh, so then Irene, as mayor, will be able to. Open, you know, pull it off. I don't know exactly how it's gonna be enshrouded, but somehow and read it. Um, I'll say a few words and then we're also gonna ask. Uh, what, uh, it may be someone who actually spoke at his funeral. Uh, but who was very involved in the Seneca Creek environmental work, I think, given Scott's extraordinary. Contribution to environmental work in the county, that having someone talk to that side of what he did as well as to his governmental side would be very good. Uh, and um, you know, we don't know how many people come. We want to make sure it's well advertised. We'd like to have something in the April forecast about that. And obviously some town criers. Uh, those of us who knew Scott and know people who know and want to make sure we reach out directly to those other people to invite them. Uh, but also I'd like to invite uh people from organizations that he worked with, such as the council government, such as Nature Forward. Uh, anybody else in the environmental community, uh, and also invite some elected officials. Who may or may not come, we don't know, but we'd like to invite them, um, such as uh County Executive Elrich, uh, Council Member Friedson, maybe other members from the County Council. Um, and also our state delegation, uh, and um Rich Madaleno, who did know Scott quite well. Uh, and we also are inviting the family, uh, and we know that at least uh his niece Lisa will come. But others may well also. So anyway, I think it'll be a very nice occasion. And uh, we just want to make sure we publicize it and thanks to the excellent advice of Irene, there will be a reception afterwards. To make sure we can draw the crowd. Uh, and, and we can't, we, we don't have a rain date. If it is raining. Uh, we're requesting that we'll try to have it here in the town hall. And we'll take a picture of the plaque when it's set up on a clear day and then Irene can unveil the picture as it's shown up on the screen. Um, uh, to um, uh. Uh, which I think would be the same, but that's what I'll have to do because the family's flying in. We can't, we can't change the date. Uh, but anyway, that's what we plan to do.
Should be lovely, for sure. Um, great.
Good.
Good, good, good. And I just want to make sure you're, you're gonna be able to put something together that will be put into the forecaster.
Yes.
Gonna be doing that.
And what's the date for the fourth?
Twenty, get everything in by March twenty.
The twentieth, okay, yeah, yeah, I'll be easy to do.
Okay. Um, the last thing I wanted to, uh, Stephanie and I have had a couple of email exchanges around this is uh. Last week or the week before, I'm running out of. Time, I don't exactly know what happened. There was a public safety session at B C C. Uh, about the various lockdowns that, that, two lockdowns that have occurred at the high school. Um, in, in the last month or five weeks and uh what um. Uh, Stephanie, I've been discussing is about, you know, the police. Um, notification, which is something as a council we've discussed before and um. The, the specific example that was brought up was that Wonders, as I think, right next door. Did not know that there was a lockdown situation occurring at B C C and um. Kind of, there was a bit of safety consideration around that, so the request, and I don't want to, Stephanie, I, I want you to. Um, also interject is, the request is, should we, or the discussion point for us is, should we as a. Counsel consider um penning a letter. Asking the police department to, if there is an active investigation going on in a particular area, meaning. Town of Chevy Chase, section three, section five, North Church, whatever that section might be, that, that it be posted to their. Twitter or X channel. And that's all, that's the only information provided, because obviously the police department has said in the past, they're never gonna comment on a thing. But to at least say there is an active police investigation going on and that way you, you know, figure it out from.
Well, right now, so the communities around here that have uh. Their own police force, that's, that's the village, right? So. Would they know if something's going on, like because they have their own police force? I'm just, I'm just asking, like, is that like?
There's, is it? There's no reason they would unless, unless, I mean, I get, sure, like, anyone can listen to a scanner. We could have somebody full time listening. To a scanner in the town office. But then you still have to figure out how to get that information out to people. So in theory, the Village of Chevy Chase Police are listening to the scanner and have some idea that there's. An incident people are responding to around B C C High, High School.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the, you know, the, it is, it is rather acute for wonders. If they happen to have the children out or even that other daycare center over there by. or even that other daycare center over there by Elm Street Park, if they have the children outside the boundaries here. My children happened to be Wonders students during the sniper incident. I don't know if you recall that, but that was over 20 years ago. But as, you know, as a result of that incident, they significantly changed their safety procedures. You know, that where you, you know, you couldn't get in there, you had to be buzzed in. There were also other safety procedures that they instituted in terms of when they took the children out of the building to avoid issues like that. So, you know, I just think since we have that institution here within our borders, and God knows what else may be going on at this community center with young children. You know, so I don't know if we need to get a police scanner, if we need to have somebody, somebody else who listens to those, but.
Well, you know, if I, just as an aside, that day when I was, I was walking up from, from your house up, the boys that had the BB guns and whatever were right in front of your neighbor, two houses, three houses up, sitting on, sitting on the stone. They had, at the time, as I was walking the dog, the kids were on the playground from one to school. So, I mean, it was, you know, they were a block away from, you know, three juveniles that had possessed weapons. So it just doesn't make any sense that the county, that the police department doesn't have some emergency contact information for schools, whether they be public or private. So I don't know how we.
Is it worth, is it worth putting it in a letter and sending?
I think, I think, I just don't.
Do we have conversations with them?
Could you guys use your microphones? I have trouble hearing.
Sorry, I don't know. Do we have regular conversations with them? That's a question for Todd or Dave about, you know, incidents that are happening, live incidents.
Yeah, I don't, you know.
Conversations with some of the MCPD officials, and they've indicated, you know, that they, they don't give live updates as crime incidents are occurring. And I'm not so sure how useful, just simply saying there's an active crime occurring in your community and like giving a location or anything like that, I'm not sure how useful that would be. But we have been told by MCPD officials that they do not provide live updates on active crime incidents because they're ever-evolving, and they don't want to mislead or provide misleading information. If they're in pursuit of anyone, it's, it's, it's obviously ever-evolving, but and I just don't know how useful any notification it would be that there is something occurring in your community without any more details. I just don't understand quite.
Is there a way, Todd, I mean, we have, we have police coverage in the town. What, 12 hours, 17 hours a day, or whatever it is? Why can't we get those, if those police, those guys are constantly on their police radios? So if they get a notification, why couldn't they call you or there's somebody in the town? And we could at least walk over to Oneness and say, hey, there's, you know, there's an incident occurring.
Or you just call them.
Or, or, yeah, or us call them, whatever. But why can't we get our own troopers to notify us when something is potentially occurring in the town? And let them use their discretion, you know, as to whether or not it's a meaningful event that ought, that they ought to come to you with.
Because they're often, and they're always actually, not often, always the first, first on scene. So we really can't ask them to take the time to notify us of things that they don't know or aren't aware of. And they probably know no details of these incidents that are occurring, and they're just asking to be, to be responsive to them. I don't think that's a realistic option, actually.
I mean, can we talk to them about what would be?
Well, how does a school know that they have a?
Well, no, they lock down the high schools and the elementary schools in the area, so somebody had to notify them.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
It's the reverse, I don't know how in the first incident that the other school, the other second school locked down. I don't know how that happened. So something happened at BCC, BCC called in, I suspect, the police, the police, then they have their own procedures for lockdown. I don't know how that second school found out to then go into their own lockdown.
That's my question. And so then in that case.
Why can't we, why can't we ask our, I mean, we got our own, ask our officers, what, how, how do they think we could help solve the problem?
Yeah, I feel.
I mean, just get somebody that knows something about the routine.
I feel, I don't, I feel as though we're being like painted into a corner here, right? They want people to say, if you see something, say something. But on the other hand, we don't know if what we're seeing is something that should be like reported. I don't, I'm not like understanding.
I think that's a different, I think it's kind of a different issue, though. I mean, I, what I'm focused on is just what are, and I'm fine doing this as a conversation with the, with, you know, the captain rather than a letter, but I, I don't think that it is universally accepted, that it is a best practice to not notify people in an area where there is an ongoing crime. I, I do not believe that that is true. And I would like to have a conversation with them about what to do when there is an ongoing incident unfolding in a residential area.
Well, the commander of the district has always been willing to come and talk and.
Yeah, but they've also said, we'll let you know if, if we're in your area, we'll let you know if there's something.
Well, let's, let's get her again.
But let us know how.
Yeah, let's, let's have another.
They would knock on the door and say that there's something going on. I mean, it's not, that's, that's the impression that I have received.
Why don't we ask, why don't we ask her to engage again with us?
I wouldn't ask the commander if I were, if the council wants to escalate this, because we've gotten these rote responses from, from our district. Why don't we go to the chief?
Go to the chief.
Your electeds. It's just not working at this level. And there are very, very strict protocols they have to follow, so our off-duty officers are very unlikely to alert us to crime incidents. If they provide the wrong information, they could be relieved of duty or otherwise liable for passing.
The chief isn't elected. The chief is hired by the county council. The sheriff's elected. Yeah.
I didn't say that.
Oh, I thought you said the chief was elected.
Or, I said, or go to your electeds.
Oh, yes.
It's just not working at this level. We need to escalate, as we always do. So it's much a better ask to the chief or to Mark Elrich.
Right. I mean, I, just by way of example, so I was following Montgomery County Police on Twitter the day of the incident that involved the kids in the park. That was about a third of a mile from, from the high school. And they were tweeting out some pretty specific information about what was going on, including that the high school went into lockdown. But about half an hour behind anything that would be relevant. Now, look, if the issue is that they don't know where the kids have run to, or what, you know, I, I get it, we're not, I don't think anyone is saying that we want them to use social media to say, like, we are actively looking for these suspects between these blocks or whatever. But just to let us know in closer to real time, what's going on? And that there is a suspect at large, I mean, like, how many times have you guys seen notifications that, like, there's a suspect at large, you know, may or may not be dangerous, blah, blah, blah? And we just haven't, the Montgomery County never, ever tweets anything like that.
Definitely think it's an ask of a higher level than the second district.
Do other jurisdictions do that?
In the county?
Yeah, or in other counties? Are you aware?
Just anecdotally, I think I've heard that, oh, boy, DC maybe has, has some form of notification like that. But that's all I've heard, just anecdotally. I don't believe any other municipalities, and I don't think Montgomery County at least have such a system. I don't know.
So what?
In any event, it would be very, very vague. It would be very general about, you know, obviously they don't want to tip off the criminals, and they don't want to give wrong information. So any information we ultimately would get would be very generalized with respect to there's an active crime scene, we're pursuing a suspect, but not giving locations, and I don't know how helpful it would be. I, I just want to make sure we ground ourselves in reality here about how much information they can share without tipping off the criminals and without providing misinformation that could be, could cause liability issues.
I have another question related to, you know, so now we are very close to a high school, there's 2,500 kids and lot happening. Are we aware if anything's changed at that school with respect to security?
I'm not aware of any. I have no, I'm not privy to that information. I have no idea.
Yeah, there was something put into Bethesda magazine, whatever it is these days, that talked about extra, like, weapons screening, you know, like the detection, thank you. But I don't think all of the, and then different sensors in different rooms, but.
Yeah, that, the public safety hearing, from having spoken to one of our residents who went to it, was mainly about safety at the school. And not, it didn't end up talking that much about the surrounding area. Just for what it's worth, I just glanced at the DC MPD Twitter account, and they do occasionally tweet out information about searching for suspects in, in violent crimes that have just occurred.
Yeah, I understood that as well.
I have a question going back to earlier part of this conversation. How is it that the school and the elementary, high school and the elementary school are locked down, but Wonders didn't know?
Right. So that's, that's the question that I'm asking, is that, is that, you know, is there some, and maybe it's worth, you know, us talking to MCPS security, whatever that is. Because, you know, maybe schools, they're all in the same cluster, get some sort of notice.
Private school. It was not the elementary school, like a part of the MCPS system.
I'm sorry, the other school that was locked down, was also locked down.
Was also locked down, but it was a private.
Which, of course, Wonders is.
And Wonders is also a private school.
Out of the private school.
Yeah, no, okay, that adds to the mystery. But I guess, what I was, behind my question was that there are, in chopping it into pieces, there's one which is, if there is an episode in the vicinity, in the area, how do we make sure that all schools in the area know about it? Full stop. Then there's a second question, which is, how do we alert residents generally in that area? And I would separate them because I would think the first is easier to solve. In other words, there really can't be any excuse not to make sure that every, every educational institution in the vicinity doesn't know.
Yeah, I think, I think those two topics are exactly what we need to address. And I, unfortunately, I really need to, to sign off here.
No, I think we're generally done. I just wanted Stephanie to get a confirmation from the rest of our colleagues. Is it okay to just start engaging?
Yeah, start engaging. And I think you may well have made a good point, Todd, that, that we have to take this up with electeds. I would always suggest if we're going to go to the county executive, we also need to go to Council Member Friedson. In fact, he's the one who's most engaged locally, anyway.
Yeah, but I, you know, we, we need, you don't want to jump on the police department if they're not the problem. I mean, so we need, why don't we talk to somebody there? It's, there's got to be a community relations officer in, in the headquarters of the, of the Montgomery County Police. And at least talk to them and say, hey, here's our problem. What do you guys, what do you guys do about it? You know, what is, and what is our path to finding a solution to this?
We did have someone come to our council meeting a while ago, didn't we?
We did, but that was the commander. That's why Todd's saying they aren't, they're restricted. I imagine they're following orders. Like he said, you're probably not going to get anything from them to change the way they behave when they respond to an incident. So you got to get, you got to get into the headquarters organization of the police department to, to solve it. So maybe we just, you know, we ought to take that first step.
Let me speak with other mayors as well to see if there's similar concerns.
It's a great idea.
Municipalities so that we can band together.
And East Bethesda also, not just communities, but some of the civic.
Sure, sure. To see if what else might, might be enough. I can call the mayor of Rockville and Casey Sturgis well and just understand better because they got saddled with doing their own expenses for.
They have their own police forces.
Yeah, so, but there was like a thing going on.
All right, I really do have to run. Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Bye.
Okay, I think we are good, unless there was anything else anyone wanted to bring up. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, Wicca, for showing up and staying the whole time.
Appreciate it.
Night, good night.